Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular City Council meeting of Thursday, April 10th, 2025. I'm Julie Daigle, the City Council President and Ward for City Councillor. Councillors present tonight include Councillors Peach, Gould, Gamash, Higgins, Welton, McGinn, Rosignol, and Melville. Absent include Councillors Manning Martin and Councillor Turco. Public participation at this meeting is provided in person and remotely via Zoom in accordance with Mass General laws. The Zoom link can be found on the city website. This meeting is also being televised and recorded by PBD TV and the City Council's stenographer. Please join me for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. If there's no objection, prior to our hearing scheduled, I would like to see if the council would entertain hearing a proposal from a potential Eagle Scout who would like to do something at PBD High School. He has a brief presentation and a handout, if you're all willing to hear this prior to our public hearing. This is...
I'll move.
Thank you, councillors. Mr. Louis Giuffre, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Louis Giuffre and my address is 163 Linfield Street. I do happen to have a handout.
Motion to receive.
Thank you. Motion to receive, late communication three, we're going to call it. We can help you distribute that. You guys might recognize Mr. Giuffre, he was at Student Government Day last week, as a councillor at large, and did a great job. So bear with us with this... While we hand that out, if you want to get started on your presentation of what you're proposing to do for this project.
So, as it gets passed around, you can see that we have a proposed location and building of a shed, or storage shed, for the junior ROTC at PBD High School. Currently, our... Currently, our Raiders team, which is an obstacle course racing team, if any of you guys are familiar with Spartan races, it's similar to that, we have to take all of our items, which are stored in the third floor of the classroom, which are, include like heavy rucksacks and a lot of equipment we use, and bring them down to the field, which is right around where the proposed location is, every day right after school. And waiting for us there are usually extra heavy ammo cans, tires, and canoes, that because they don't have a place for them to stay permanently, we have had a problem in the past of kids coming during football games and larger events and like messing around with them and misplacing them. So the main point of this proposal is putting a more permanent home to protect these items, and a home that's closer to the actual place we will be practicing. The storage facility also has an area dedicated to extra functions during our home competitions, like selling snacks, or helping run the competition. If you see on the item labeled "three" in the packet, there's like a little pop-up on the side to sell said snacks. But for this main purpose, it is to store said items to make it easier for the PBD ROTC Raiders team.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the councillors? Councillor Rosignol?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I think this is fantastic. I think it's a great project, and I think it's well-needed. I know Councillor Melville and I were actually just chatting. The ROTC has really changed since he was in it and what it is now, so I commend you for this project. The only question I actually have is the size of the building that's before us.
Um...
Roughly?
The rough size, I don't have the exact figures on me right now, but the place's position is, if you actually look at where that path is, when we set up our course to compete, we run right past there. So part of the design constraints was to make it so we can still compete and use that area for practice. But it is tucked off to the side, and at least the dimensions that we have made are purposely made so that when we do go to you to buy lumber and stuff, that we won't have to be doing a lot of cutting and wasting of the, of excess lumber, which is in the consideration for the size of the project.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councillor Rosignol, and I do want to stress, Mr. Giuffre, and I spoke about this prior to him presenting, this, he came up with a great location. He is aware that the high school is going to be under renovation, and so this can be mobile and moved if need be. And I do want to thank Joe Beckencourt, the architect, and the audience for putting together these beautiful plans. And he might have dimensions, I won't put them on the spot unless anyone really needs them. Are there any other councillors with questions? Councillor Melville?
No, it's just a comment. This is outstanding, and, you know, adapt and overcome. This is what you do. Great job.
Thank you.
Councillor Gould?
Thank you, Madam President. Lou, are you doing a fundraiser to get funds, or do you need help? What are we, what are we doing? How can we help you?
So, we will be doing a, some fundraisers, but part of the project that was factored in was in the past when we've built some of our, some of our obstacles, like we have a nine-foot wall that we had to build. Home Depot and Lowe's have donated a lot of the lumber materials. And one of my friends, Aiden Walsh, who recently built his Eagle Scout project, I've been in contact with the same people who donated all the stuff for his project, and they're said interest in donating some of the, some more materials for that.
Okay. Well, if you need to come back to us and let us know, if you need some help, let us know, please. Joe, if you can help there, let us know, please. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councillor Gould. Councillor McGinn?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say I've been involved with a number of Eagle projects over the years. I have two sons that are Eagle Scouts, and this looks like a fairly ambitious one, but I think it looks great. I think it looks great. I wish you the best of luck, and please let us know if you need any kind of support along the way.
Thank you, councillors. As this is time-sensitive, for, in order to achieve your Eagle Scout status and to start working, I'll entertain a suggestion or a recommendation to approve this between the council and the school committee. You heard the motion from Councillor Gould. Councillor Melville, I'm sorry, Welton?
That's all right. He's more handsome than I am, anyway. I can understand the confusion there. With, with this project, I'm just curious if, and this is to any councillors who may know, should we have the building inspector weigh in in terms of the size of the building, if we have restrictions? I know, like, with many sheds, we often run up against the size and the setbacks and all that sort of stuff. I'm not sure if anyone has any thoughts on that, or how best to move forward. I think this is a wonderful project and want to be absolutely fully supportive. I just want to make sure that we're setting it up successfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Melton, Welton, oh my gosh, Melville Welton. Can we amend that pending approval or consultation from the building inspector to help work with you to make sure you meet all of your setbacks and zoning requirements? Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you, Louis. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to hearings, entertainment license 4A. Would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 10th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, and remotely via Zoom on the application from Show You Holdings LLC, DBA Show You Restaurant &amp; Bar, 2 Central Street, PBD Mass, requesting an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television, radio, digital music, and live entertainment, specifically live music limited to four pieces/members. Comedy shows at said 2 Central Street, PBD Mass. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under City Calendar on the homepage, or contact the City Clerk's office. PBD City Council, Councillor Julie K. Daigle, City Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would the petitioner please state your name and address for the record, and give us a description of your application?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the PBD City Council. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in PBD, Massachusetts. I appear this evening on behalf of Show You Holdings LLC, business located at 2 Central Street in PBD, Massachusetts, former site of the, of bank. And as such, it's currently under renovation, which we expect to complete the build-out and be in a position to be open in the late fall, hopefully by the first of the year, the end of this particular year. We've asked for an entertainment license in which we've requested television, radio, and digital music, and then live entertainment in the form of karaoke, DJ, occasional comedy show. And we would, we've suggested in our application, we would limit live, any live music to four pieces, four members of any performing artists. And following this, this hearing, we have a, we're asking for your consideration for an outdoor dining license. With that, I'm happy, my clients are Michael, me, and Vicki Yu. They are a married couple who actually reside in PBD Mass and Knax's Circle. We are, I'm happy to say, I believe Michael is with us this evening on Zoom, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The family operates three other facilities, one in Andover, one in Saugus, and one in Boston, where they are excited about the opportunity presented here in PBD, and they look forward to being good citizens here in the city of PBD, and the operators of what we hope would be a very successful restaurant, and a restaurant which will become a new destination for downtown PBD. Happy to answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Attorney Kelty. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Is there anyone on the Zoom platform that would like to speak? Seeing none. Councillor McGinn?
Thank you, Madam President. I met with the applicants, Ms. Vicki Yu and Mr. Michael Me, and their attorney, Attorney Kelty. As you heard, they're hoping to be open by the end of the year, but they certainly have a significant amount of work ahead of them to achieve that timeline. Based on what was shared with me, the general plan is to have occasional live entertainment, which would primarily be karaoke on Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, and non-live entertainment that would be played most of the time in the background. There are 40 total living units in close proximity to 2 Central Street, and the applicants are clear that noise needs to be contained to the building. The applicants are agreeable to live entertainment hours that align with their anticipated hours of operation and live entertainment offerings, so that'd be 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM Monday through Wednesday, 6:00 to midnight Thursday to Saturday, and 6:00 to 10:00 on Sunday. I support this application. At this time, I would defer to other councillors.
Councillor Gamash?
Yes, just a point of order. The applications for 2 Central Street, 2 Central Street is Bill and Bob's. That should be on the odd side of Central Street. The number's wrong.
No, it isn't. I think there are two, two central streets here in PBD Mass. One of them is this bank.
Really?
Yeah. Yes.
Well, I guess I proved him wrong, but I should have. The old Heffer Pub.
Yes.
This is the old Heffer Pub. So...
Councillor McGinn?
Yeah, thank you, Councillor Daigle. Through you to Councillor Gamash. There was some renumbering done a number of years ago, and it related to, I think formally eliminating any addresses that had the PBD Square address. They're, they used, and I think that's when this changed. So I'm not sure that there are actually two. I think that, I think, I think that the Central Street addresses got reshuffled to some extent.
Yeah, I think one, one of the two central streets has been abandoned and given another number. But our assessors' notifications went out based on 2 Central, and they were this parcel of land, the Heffer Pub.
If I may, quick question. If you Google 2 Central Street, you come up with Bill and Bob's. If you Google 2 Central Street?
Yep.
You come up with Bill and Bob's. So, just a point of order. So...
Any other councillors? Councillor McGinn?
Thank you, Madam President. I think we're just commenting by saying that we are all dating ourselves by using the Heffer, Heffer Pub reference.
Me neither.
The, at this time, Madam President, I would move to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councillor McGinn?
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve the application. Show You Holdings LLC, doing businesses, Show You Restaurant &amp; Bar, 2 Central Street, PBD Mass, requesting an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television, radio, digital music, and live entertainment, specifically live music limited to four pieces/members. Comedy shows at said 2 Central Street, PBD Mass, with the following conditions: hours of non-live entertainment, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM Monday to Saturday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM Sunday, or as otherwise stipulated in a Sunday license to be obtained from the mayor's office. Hours of live entertainment, up to four performers and up to two amplifiers, 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM Monday to Wednesday, 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM Thursday to Saturday, and 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM Sunday, or as otherwise stipulated in a Sunday license to be obtained from the mayor's office. All entertainment to take place inside the building with the windows and doors closed during any live entertainment offering. A muted television is permitted in the outdoor dining area during the hours for which outdoor dining is permitted. Owners will make ongoing reasonable efforts to prevent noise from becoming disruptive to area residents and abutting businesses. So moved.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Councillors Peach?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Gamash?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rosignol?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 4B, hearing for an outdoor dining license for the same address. Would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 10th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, and remotely via Zoom on the application from Show You Holdings LLC, DBA Show You Restaurant &amp; Bar, 2 Central Street, PBD Mass, requesting an outdoor dining license at said 2 Central Street, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with section 5.4.6 of the PBD zoning ordinance. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under City Calendar on the homepage, or contact the City Clerk's office. PBD City Council, Councillor Julie K. Daigle, City Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have the same petitioner before us, but please repeat your name and address for the record and a summary of what you'd like to do.
Once again, John Kelty, 40 Lowell Street, PBD, Massachusetts, appearing on behalf of Show You Restaurant here in PBD Mass. The property is owned by Show You Holdings LLC. We're proposing outdoor dining on a deck that is not in existence today. Essentially, there used to be a drive-through canopy. That drive-through lane and canopy is going to be replaced with a deck that will cover the majority of the existing parking lot. And we've disclosed on our application, there are 96 seats in that outdoor dining session. We've discussed with our ward councillor, Mr. McGinn, that we understand that that'll be a seasonal permit, that the TV must be muted, that we intend to put out there, and that there be no live entertainment held, no, nobody performing on the deck itself. All entertainment would need to be inside, as our condition just reflected in, we would respectfully request approval of our outdoor dining application.
Thank you, Attorney Kelty. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition in the audience? Is there anyone on the Zoom platform? Seeing none. Councillor McGinn?
Thank you, Madam President. As with the prior matter, I met with the applicants and their attorney. And as you heard from Attorney Kelty, you can see on the plan, there's a significant-sized deck on the side of the building where outdoor dining will be offered. The applicants are agreeable to several conditions that are similar to conditions that are in place on other outdoor dining permits. These relate to hours, noise, lighting, smoking, and pest control. I think this is, will be a really nice addition to the downtown, and I support the application. At this time, I would defer to other councillors.
Any comments from councillors? Seeing none. Councillor McGinn?
Thank you, Madam President. Move to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councillor McGinn?
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve the application from Show You Holdings LLC, doing businesses, Show You Restaurant &amp; Bar, 2 Central Street, PBD Mass, requesting an outdoor dining license at said 2 Central Street, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with section 5.4.6 of the PBD zoning ordinance, with the following conditions: permissible outdoor dining hours, May 1 through September 30th, 11:30 AM to 11:00 PM, Sunday through Wednesday, 11:30 AM to 12:00 AM, Thursday through Saturday. Owners will make ongoing reasonable efforts to prevent noise from becoming disruptive to area residents and abutting businesses. Any lights in the outdoor dining area will be designed and situated in such a way that they do not illuminate abutous properties, and all lights in the outdoor dining area will be off during times that use of outdoor dining area is not permitted. There will be no smoking of any type or vaping in the outdoor dining area. Plan review must be completed with the Health Department prior to start of construction. Outdoor dining must be included in the integrated pest management plan, and in accordance with zoning ordinance section 5.4.6, outdoor dining licenses must be renewed annually. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councillors Peach?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Gamash?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Rosignol?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, councillors. Have a nice evening.
You as well, Attorney Kelty. Moving on to reports of committees. Finance Committee, Councillor McGinn, again.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance Committee met early this evening. We had three items on the agenda. The first item was Peabody Veterans Memorial High School feasibility study in an amount of $8 million. This was presented to us by his honor, the mayor. There were two late communications that were associated with this item. There was a motion by Counselor Rozignol to receive late communication two. Now make that motion to the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. There was also a motion by Counselor Rozignol to receive late communication one and refer to this matter. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. The mayor stepped us through the contents of late communication two, which was a schedule of deliverables through the eligibility period, and that, the various milestones that need to take place, that includes the vote for the funding for the feasibility study. It was comments made in support by several counselors, Counselors Rozignol, Welton, Gomash, and, and others, Peach, all commented on this. In response to a question from Counselor Welton, the mayor said that he anticipates the high school, without being held to a firm timeline, we should be looking at a four-to-five year horizon for construction. The, also present were several members of the school building committee, included the principal of the school, Brooke Randall, Herb Levine. Present for the school committee was school committee member Jared Hockman, and the mayor also pointed out that there are three members of the city council on the school building committee, Counselors Gomash, Dagle, and Peach. I'm sorry, I have four, four members and Tom Gould. Counselor Gomash commented that he was very pleased with the composition of the school building committee, that he thought that it was a talented group, a cross-section of the community, that thought it would be a very strong group in helping to lead this initiative forward. And again, the mayor reiterated the importance of this preliminary step to essentially fund the feasibility study. With that as explanation, there was a motion made by Counselor Melville. Motion was made in a, in a manner that was a little unusual because, because of some critical timing on MSBA submittals, the council had previously taken action to draft and advertise this bond order. So Counselor Melville's motion was for a favorable recommendation for the bond order for the Peabody Veterans Memorial High School feasibility study in an amount of $8 million, favorable recommendation to the full council. And I now make that motion to the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, vote, please.
Counselors Peach-
Yes.
Gould-
Yes.
Gomash-
Yes.
Higgins-
Yes.
Welton-
Yes.
McGinn-
Yes.
Rozignol-
Yes.
Melville-
Yes.
Dagle-
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Counselor McGinn.
Second item on the agenda was a transfer request, transfer of funds, building demolition in an amount of $170,979. This was presented to us by his honor, the mayor. This is some additional money that is needed for demolition of some, two city buildings on Berry Street that are in much need of removal. This is some incremental funding that was needed because of some issues that were encountered on the site with contamination, which need to be addressed. The funding would come from some interest on Opera Funds that we had, and the communication from his honor, the mayor, indicated that this project does meet Opera guidelines for outdoor spaces and neighborhood cleanup. With that as explanation, there was a motion made by Counselor Gould to approve the transfer request from Opera Funds interest account number 25005900348122021, an amount of $170,979, to building demolition account number 30000587292025, an amount of $170,979. Madam President, that motion passed the Finance Committee unanimously, and I'll bring it for consideration to the full council. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, vote, please.
Counselors Peach-
Yes.
Gould-
Yes.
Gomash-
Yes.
Higgins-
Yes.
Welton-
Yes.
McGinn-
Yes.
Rozignol-
Yes.
Melville-
Yes.
Dagle-
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. The last item on the agenda was to Benavido Circle, Circle deed in lieu of payment. This item was presented to us by the City Treasurer, Mr. Ross Titlebaum, and he explained that this is a property that's a, an unbuildable lot, that is, has a significant past due taxes situation, and however, the, it's an estate situation, and a trust where all of the trustees and associated parties are no longer living. So in order to settle this, the attorney is hoping to sign over the deed to the property, which is valued at somewhere in the ballpark of $6,500, to address a significant back tax bill of $101,000. Mr. Titlebaum assured us that there was nowhere else to turn on this, and with that assurance, there was a motion made by Counselor Rozignol to accept the recommendation of the City Treasurer, which was to accept the deed in lieu of payment for to Benavido Circle, parcel 011-065. That motion passed the Finance Committee unanimously, vote five, nothing, and I now bring it for consideration to the full council. So moved, Madam President.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, vote, please.
Counselors Peach-
Yes.
Gould-
Yes.
Gomash-
Yes.
Higgins-
Yes.
Welton-
Yes.
McGinn-
Yes.
Rozignol-
Yes.
Melville-
Yes.
Dagle-
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. That completes my report.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Welcome back, Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8B and refer to ICD. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, it's a vote.
I was not here two weeks ago, so I just want to, I have no further motions, but just wanted to take a moment to congratulate Counselor McGinn on making his decision to leave the council. I came back, so nobody else make any announcements tonight. I'm a little sleep deprived, and I'm not ready for that. It was quite the shock two weeks ago, watching from my living room. So congratulations, Counselor McGinn. It's been a pleasure working with you and serving with you. I'm going to have to get the coffee out and cross more teas and dot some i's with you gone, and I think we all feel that weight, but it'll be good for us. But congratulations, and I wish you well. We'll have the next year. We're almost halfway through the year. Oh, my God. But, you know, we'll have many more months to serve together, and, you know, I know you're looking forward to spending more time with your family. So congratulations on that decision. You will certainly be missed. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Counsel Peach.
Thank you, Counselor Peach. Yes, we have nine more months together. Counsel Gould.
No motions, Madam President.
Counsel Gomash.
Yes, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8A. I don't know if this, are you Katie Smith? Okay. At this time, I move that we receive 8A, and the building inspector, where am I here? Is, let's see, is my copy, I'm sorry, I gotta-
Could we receive and approve that, Counsel Gomash?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna receive and approve. So moved.
You heard the motion. I would like to thank Ms. Smith, who's been here since prior to seven o'clock, so thank you for your patience. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you very much. Counsel Gomash.
Yes, I'd also like to move under suspension of the rules to go to item number nine, presentations, petitions, memorials, and remonstratives, 9A, Junksteele's license, renewal for 2025, Bill Salem Music and Fofo's 136 Main Street, Cash Call 161 Main Street, Kay Jewelers, number 1244 to 10 Andover Street, Long's Jewelers, 35 Cross Street, My Tony &amp; James Limited, 215 Newbury Street, Suite 206, and the Velvet Elvis, 101 Newbury, 101 Lynn Street. Move approval, all papers being in order.
Thank you, Counsel Gomash. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Gomash.
Yes, at this time, I would like to, under suspension of rules, go to item 10, unfinished business from preceding meeting, and for, ready for a council adoption, an ordinance amending section 18-21, entitled Rates and Compensation for Full-Time Positions, Not Subject to Collective Bouting under Code of the City of Peabody, Public Works Foreman. This is an ordinance be adained by the City Council of the City of Peabody as follows: Section 1, that the ordinance establishing a compensation and classification plan is hereby amended as follows. The Code of the City of Peabody adopted January 23, 1969, and amended hereby, further amended by deleting from section 18-21, the ordinance establishing a compensation and classification plan for the following. The position effective July 1, 2025, Public Works Foreman, Water, eighteen, eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and two dollars, and substituting there for the following. Position effective March 1, 2025, Public Works Foreman, Water, one hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Section 2, all ordinances and parts of ordinance inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law, introduced February 13, 2025, order published February 27, 2025, and published March 20, 2025. So moved.
Thank you, Counsel Gomash. You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, vote.
Counselors Peach-
Yes.
Gould-
Yes.
Gomash-
Yes.
Higgins-
Yes.
Welton-
Yes.
McGinn-
Yes.
Rozignol-
Yes.
Melville-
Yes.
Dagle-
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Gomash.
No further motions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Higgins.
I have no motions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Higgins. Counsel Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. No motions this evening. However, I would like to take the opportunity to recognize Counsel Gould. This week, myself and a number of other folks from Peabody had a chance to go down and see that he was honored as a Changing Lives Award recipient from the Northeast Ark, much-deserved award for the recognition of decades of hard work in the community, but also particularly working on behalf of people with disabilities. So very fortunate to have Tom in such a great capacity, not only as a city council, but as a leader in our community, providing opportunities for people with all abilities to be fully included. So, Tom, it's a pleasure knowing you in this capacity, but what you do in the community, even outside of your role as city council, is amazing. So very happy to call you a friend, very happy for you to have the recognition, and the whole community is very proud of you. So congratulations.
Thank you very much, Craig. Madam President, thank you.
No further motions.
Thank you, Counsel Welton, and yes, congratulations, Counsel Gould. That was very well deserved, and it was a very touching event that you did deserve. So, thank you. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President, and yes, congratulations, Counsel Gould. Well deserved. Madam President, move to receive and refer to Finance, item 7A. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 7B and refer to Finance. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 7C and refer to Finance. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. No further motions.
Thank you, Counsel McGinn. Counsel Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. No motions this evening, but I want to echo Counsel Welton's praise for Tom Gould and a well-deserved honor the other evening. So congratulations, Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Counsel Rozignol. Counselor Melville.
No motions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. I have no motions myself, so I will entertain the last one to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Counsel Gomash, thank you.